visions before us, we just pray that everything that we do is for the betterment of the schools, for our students, for administration and staff, and we just thank you for the blessings that you've given us in so many ways. In Jesus's name, amen.
Okay. All right, um, so before we get started, I'm gonna do something a little unusual, I'll explain what's gonna happen. Mike was very nice to nominate me as president last meeting, and everybody was equally nice to vote me in. The problem is, I can't run the Zoom meetings and do the streaming and run the meetings at the same time. So I, um, I contacted the ISBA. Their suggestion was, you know, we can just flip-flop the president and the vice president. So I'm gonna make a motion right now to, um, we're gonna change things around, and I, since Matt's now the vice president, I'm gonna make a motion to make Matt Roberts the president of the board. Do I have? All right.
Who is the second by?
That was me.
Ron. All those four?
Hi.
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 Cool, okay, Matt's now the president, now it's your job, Matt.
So do I need, do we need to make a motion to vote you in as vice?
Yes.
Okay. So I'd like to make the motion to, for Scott Carmichael to be the vice president of the board.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? The eyes have it. Okay. Participation at school board meetings. Board recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues, and the importance of allowing members of the public to express concerns regarding agenda items. Comments will be limited to board meeting agenda items with a time limit of three to five minutes. If anybody would like to, um, comment on something that's on the agenda, you can send Scott a quick message, or you can unmute yourself, state your name, your address. Do I have anybody that is interested in commenting? Okay, it doesn't appear so. It's recommended that the agenda for the February 16th, 2021 meeting be approved as presented with additions, corrections, or deletions as recommended by the board. Do I have a motion?
Hold on.
Sharon Epps. Second.
I'll second.
Heather Hudson. All those, well, let's just, we'll do one at a time to make it more clear. We don't have a ton of agenda items. Scott Carmichael.
Hi. For?
Sharon Epps.
Hi.
Heather Hudson.
Hi.
Ron Childress.
Hi.
Mike Adams.
Hi.
And I will vote I, passed six zero. Approval of minutes, it's recommended that the minutes from the January 11th, 2021 meeting be approved as presented. Do I have a motion?
I do.
Sure.
Scott Carmichael, seconded by Sharon Epps. Now, I believe, Ron, you were absent. So that'll be an abstention. And all the, uh, all those in favor, Scott Carmichael?
Hi.
Sharon Epps.
Hi.
Heather Hudson.
Hi.
Mike Adams.
Hi.
And I will vote I, passed five zero one. Approval of claims, it's recommended that the claim numbers one, three, one, eight, zero through.
One, three, two, seven, five.
Be approved as presented, thank you, Marilyn. Any questions about any of those claims? Okay, do I have a motion by?
Hi.
Scott Carmichael. Seconded by Heather Hudson. All those in favor, Scott Carmichael.
Hi.
Sharon Epps.
Hi.
Heather Hudson.
Hi.
Ron Childress.
Hi.
Mike Adams.
Hi.
And I will vote I, passed six zero. Alrighty, Trent.
Okay, thank you very much. First of all, I want to say thank you to all the, um, community members out there joining us, uh, thank you for your flexibility and in joining us virtually as the weather was just not gonna allow us to, to do it, uh, face to face, so thank you very much, but this'll work out just fine. So the corporation business, uh, the first agenda item is, um, I'm recommending to approve the memorandum of understanding with adult and child health, school-based services. Uh, they're going to, um, be able to provide us some counseling services for students within our, um, elementary building. I think it's gonna be a very good partnership we have with them, um, provide some very much needed, um, counseling services that will, will benefit our schools, I think it'll be a good partnership.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, do I have a motion? Heather Hudson. Seconded by Scott Carmichael. All those in favor, Scott Carmichael.
Hi.
Sharon Epps.
Hi.
Heather Hudson.
Hi.
Ron Childress.
Hi.
Mike Adams.
Hi.
And I will vote I, passed six zero.
Thank you. Next up is, uh, a recommendation to approve Lewis and Capps as the corporation attorney. Basically, that is a law firm that a, a lawyer that we have worked, uh, Eastern has worked with, uh, before, and I have worked with before in different, a different corporation. Susan Trainer. She's a very well-respected, uh, lawyer in the field of education, special education, uh, just all around, um, and, and a very, just great person to, to work with. That is, uh, the law firm she works with, so, uh, the board, I think will have a very good working relationship with her, so that would be my recommendation is to approve Lewis and Capps as a corporation attorney.
Any questions?
I have a question. I didn't realize we were gonna change attorneys, I know it was discussed about getting bids. I believe the bids come in the same, and we've had Bunker and Roberts for a long, long time. They're well-known, well-educated, well-versed in all school aspects, they're, they're attorneys at other schools, and why are we, why are we getting rid of them?
I believe their guidance and leadership over the last couple of years, Mike, has been less than what we've asked for and what we needed, and so I'm all in favor of making a change.
Are you saying that because they did an investigation on a board member?
Nope, not at all. Not at all.
Okay.
It seems to me like we're hiring Louis, attorneys from Lewis and Capps to come in and work with us on our, uh, teacher negotiations anyway. So it doesn't make sense to me to have two.
Have we never, have we ever asked Bunker to do that, and he wouldn't do it?
I'm not aware, I don't know.
Well, we've never asked him to do that.
I didn't ask him to, I, I asked Susan because Eastern has worked with Susan before, and I have also on, on some things, and that's why I asked Susan this year to work on negotiations.
But we could have asked Bunker and Roberts, am I correct or not?
Suppose we could have, I don't know if they, if that's part of their expertise or not, but it's very, very well could have, yes.
Just a little bit of history, um, Susan's firm has always been asked to come in and do the teachers' ne- negotiation. Uh, they've never asked Bunker and Robinson in the past to do that.
They've never asked them? Is that what you're telling me?
Well, I, no, I don't know the particulars behind it, I just know that Susan Trainer, her, her legal corporation has always done this, and I believe it's because it was their expertise.
Okay. We have a, do we have a motion? Ron Childress. Seconded by.
Second.
Uh, Sharon Epps. Okay, those four, Scott Carmichael.
Hi.
Sharon Epps.
Hi.
Heather Hudson.
Hi.
Ron Childress.
Hi.
Mike Adams.
No.
Okay, I will pa- I will vote I, so it passes five, one, zero.
Uh, next up, we have some surplus equipment, uh, recommending to surplus the listed equipment that the board received from the high school industrial arts room. Um, it's only three or four pieces of equipment. Most of it is stuff that is either broken or is, has been deemed unsafe because of some either, um, things that are broken and, and things like that, that they just need to be upgraded, and those were deemed unsafe by our, um, inspection by our insurance company. So we have already begun replacing some of that equipment, and we just need to, um, surplus it.
Any discussion? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Heather Hudson. Uh, second. Ron Childress. All those in favor, Scott Carmichael.
Hi.
Sharon Epps.
Hi.
Heather Hudson.
Hi.
Ron Childress.
Hi.
Mike Adams.
Hi.
I'll vote I, passed six zero.
Thank you, uh, next is our, uh, buildings and grounds site study. Uh, I'm making a recommendation to give, uh, me the permission to find an architectural firm to do an in-depth site study of our buildings and grounds. This is something we were thinking about doing months ago, um, well, actually close to a year ago. But then COVID came, and we kind of put that on the back burner, but I would like to find an architectural firm that is gonna do a, um, intensive site study of our buildings and grounds, and it will help us prepare a, both a short-term and a long-term, um, plan for improving our, our buildings and grounds. So that's my recommendation to the board.
Any discussion?
What's the cost?
The firm that I was going to use is, uh, I believe it's $4,000, and then they will charge for some copying, and, cause they make up a very nice book for us. So there's some, uh, charges for copying, and there'll be some mileage costs for their travel and things like that. So I'm thinking somewhere around $5,000 at the most.
Okay. Other questions?
No.
All right, do I have a motion? Scott Carmichael, second. Sharon Epps. All those in favor, Scott Carmichael.
Hi.
Sharon Epps.
Hi.
Heather Hudson.
Hi.
Ron Childress.
Hi.
Mike Adams.
Hi.
Although I, passed six zero.
Next up, um, I'm re- making a recommendation to the board to create and advertise the position of speech and language pathologist assistant. Obviously, I think everybody knows, uh, by now that, that joint services is no longer gonna be, um, a co-op at the end of, uh, June. Eastern will be providing all of our own special ed services to our students. Right now, our, uh, speech services are contracted out to a company out of Bloomington. Um, you're gonna see later in the personnel that, that I'm recommending hiring a speech pathologist, a licensed speech pathologist. But if we can, um, find a speech and language pathologist assistant, that would help us provide all of our own speech services to our students. If we don't do that, we're still gonna have to contract out some of those services to that company out of Bloomington or another company. Um, I think it'd be more cost-effective if we did that in-house. So I would like to at least see if there is somebody out there as a assistant that is qualified and can help provide our services, cause it's, it's too big of a, um, it's too big of a caseload for one speech pathologist to do all of Eastern's, uh, speech services. We would need some help with that, so that is why I'm making that recommendation.
Any questions or discussion? Okay, do I have a motion? Heather Hudson. Do I have a second? Sharon Epps. All those in favor, Scott Carmichael.
Hi.
Sharon Epps.
Hi.
Heather Hudson.
Hi.
Ron Childress.
Hi.
Mike Adams.
Hi.
I vote I, passed six zero.
Thank you. Next up, we have, uh, personnel report. So our recommendations for our personnel are, uh, making a recommendation to approve Mary Stanger as corporation school psychologist. Uh, Mary, right now, is employed, um, with joint services. She provides, um, school psychology services for pretty much North Lawrence students at this time. Comes very highly recommended by now our director of, um, special ed, Lindsay Bailey. Lindsay has worked a great amount with Mary this past year on initiatives to, uh, within North Lawrence to make North Lawrence's special ed services better, so comes very highly recommended from, from Lindsay. Also recommending to approve Amanda Owens as corporation speech and language pathologist. Um, Amanda currently works with North Lawrence students. She has a very, uh, varied background with the types of people she's worked with. She's worked with every, uh, students from preschool all the way through su- uh, senior citizens working on speech therapy. Amanda currently works with a contract agency, so she's not an employee of North Lawrence. She's contracted by North Lawrence to do their speech services, but, um, Amanda lives in Green County and has heard nothing but good things from, uh, people about, um, Eastern Green. And once again, she's worked with Lindsay, comes very highly recommended from Lindsay. The interview I did with Amanda is probably one of the best interviews I've ever had with, with an education, um, possible employee. So, um, I'm very excited for, for her hire also. Next, uh, recommendation to approve Jennifer Caswell as a regular school bus route driver. Uh, recommending to approve maternity leave for J.C. Needler from approximately April 19th, 2021 through the end of the 2021 school year. And recommending to approve Roy Bruce Jr. for renewal of his varsity football head coaching position. And that's the personnel report.
Do I have any questions or discussion? Okay, do I have a motion? Scott Carmichael. Seconded by Ron Childress. All those in favor, Scott Carmichael.
Hi.
Sharon Epps.
Hi.
Heather Hudson.
Hi.
Ron Childress.
Hi.
Mike Adams.
Hi.
Although I, passed six zero.
Okay. Do you have a few late items? Have some more, uh, personnel that falls under our late items. Our first late item is recommending to approve Lori Bell for volunteer softball coaching position.
Any questions or co- or comments? Do I have a motion? Ron Childress, second. Scott Carmichael. All those in favor, Scott Carmichael.
Hi.
Sharon Epps.
Hi.
Heather Hudson.
Hi.
Ron Childress.
Hi.
Mike Adams.
Hi.
I'll vote I, passed six zero.
Next, um, have a recommendation to approve the retirement request for Gary Wiggington, effective April 23rd, 2021. Uh, just wanna say a few words about Gary. You know, I've known Gary now just a little over a year. You know, I started back in, in November, so it's been a little over, over a year. Don't know that I've met a more kind-hearted man than Gary Wiggington. Hard worker. The stuff this man knows about maintenance overall is unreal. He's gonna be very, very much missed at our, at our school corporation, but, uh, he's, he's worked hard for a long period of his life, and I, I congratulate him on a, on a well-deserved retirement.
Any other questions or comments?
He's a good man, he does good, good work.
I've known Gary since 2005, when I came, and he sets such a good example. I mean, he's a good leader for the rest of the maintenance staff, and always has a calm head, no matter what the situation. So he'll be missed. Do I have a motion to approve his retirement?
Yep, I'll do it.
Sharon Epps. Second. Scott Carmichael. All those in favor, Scott Carmichael.
Hi.
Sharon Epps.
Hi.
Heather Hudson.
Hi.
Ron Childress.
Hi.
Mike Adams.
Hi.
I vote I, passed six zero.
Next up, we have a recommendation to approve the resignation of Amy Terrell as Kid Zone facilitator, effective May 20th, 2021. Uh, wanna say thank you to Amy for her years of service. We will obviously work on getting, getting that position replaced, cause we know that's a very important part of our, of our schools, having that before and after-school care for our kids. So, but thank you very much to Amy for her service.
Questions or comments?
She's another one, it's gonna be really hard to replace. She has done an amazing job over the years for both the children, the parents, keeping track of all their tax records, I mean, she has just done a wonderful job. So I wanna say thank you to Amy, too.
Thank you, Amy.
I strongly believe that the Kids Zone program at Eastern is keeps some, attracts some students because, um, of transportation issues, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you, she kind of spearheaded that, so. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Heather Hudson. Second. Sharon Epps. All those in favor, Scott Carmichael.
Hi.
Sharon Epps.
Hi.
Heather Hudson.
Hi.
Ron Childress.
Hi.
Mike Adams.
Hi.
I'll vote I, passed six zero.
Next up, we have a recommendation to approve donations in the amount of $2,885 in memory of Nancy Hacker for the Hunter Roberts slash Nancy Hacker Memorial Fund. What, just what, just a wonderful, um, community outreach here to, to donate, you know, money in, in her memory, and, and this fund is, is specifically used for, um, things that happen in our, in our schools that, um, you know, tragedies or, or need. If a family or student needs something, this is a fund that can be tapped in for, to, to that, and no better person to have their name on it than Nancy Hacker. I know she was a beloved member of this community, of the school corporation. Just the, the outpouring of love I saw for this lady on Facebook and, um, through, through different social media was, was unreal, and that's what our schools are about. Our schools are made up of, of great people like this, so, um, just wanna make that, that recommendation to accept that donation.
Any discussion? Okay, do I have a motion? Scott Carmichael. Do I have a second? Ron Childress. All those in favor, Scott Carmichael.
Hi.
Sharon Epps.
Hi.
Heather Hudson.
Hi.
Ron Childress.
Hi.
Mike Adams.
Hi.
And I vote I, passed six zero.
We do have one more late item that we're gonna add, so Marilyn, I'll read this off for you, cause well, it's just be a, be an added one, so it'll be two dash eight, dash, four, one, zero, four, dash, five. So this late item pertains to the, um, filling of the vacant school board seat we have right now with, with Jared Teeman's resignation.
Can, can I say something real quick, Trent?
Please.
Before we go onto that, um, I think, I just want, on behalf, I think I speak on behalf of the board to say something, uh, on the, on behalf, to, um, put our thoughts out to the Teeman family and what they're going through right now. Um, we're, w- we understand what Jared's going through, and it, we know it was a tough decision. Um, and I think all our hearts are with their family right now of what they're having to deal with.
Yes, thank you very much for that, Scott.
I would agree.
Um, so this late item is gonna deal with the replacement of, of Jared's seat. We made it public that we were, uh, that the board was taking applications for this seat. We had two applicants that wrote in and, and answered the questions that we wanted answered, and, and they did a, they did a great job of, of giving the board all the information that, that they needed to make a decision. So this late item is going to be related to that, so we had two candidates that were interested in the position, those candidates being Martha Marmazay and Jeremy Enman. The board wishes to go ahead and vote publicly tonight. Uh, they're able to do that since our, um, since our last board meeting, obviously got rescheduled to tonight. It was after the deadline for those, uh, letters and applications to come in, so they felt like they could do it tonight instead of calling a special meeting later. So, um, I'm making the recommendation that, uh, you vote publicly tonight on those candidates, so, um, I guess I read Martha's name first, so I guess you can, you can take votes that way. I guess you can vote on Martha first if you wish to do it that way.
Okay, um, we'll take votes first on, is anyone, is anyone opposed to voting on them individually? Okay, we'll take votes first on Martha Marmazay. So when I call your name, either say aye or nay. So Scott Carmichael.
Hi.
Sharon Epps.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
That was an aye, is that correct?
Correct.
Heather Hudson.
Aye.
Ron Childress.
Aye.
And Mike Adams.
Nay.
Okay. And I will vote aye, so Martha Marmazay with a vote of five ayes, one nay passes as the new school board member for Jackson Township.
Okay, so we will, at our next meeting, we'll get Martha sworn in and.
Just to note, this is just through the end of Jared's term.
Correct.
This is not a four-year, it's just.
Yep, that was what, that was part of what we put out publicly, that this was only serving the rest of Jared's term.
Just to let the public know.
Absolutely. Okay, that's all the late items. Alls we have left is any discussion, information items. Mr. Kirkendall. If you're out there, if you want to speak about anything at the high school, feel free.
Good evening. I, I would like to also certainly pass my thoughts and prayers to the, the team and family. I know that they're going through quite a bit right now, so certainly have them on our hearts. And, and wish them good health. I also want to congratulate Gary on retiring. He has been a huge help to me at the high school, especially the, the last two years as we've, you know, done some projects and things of that nature, so I really do appreciate all his guidance. And I just kind of wanted to update everyone. Prior to all the snow, we had started I-Step, and obviously the weather is not cooperating. I, I want everyone to know that we do have a plan moving forward to manipulate our schedule for the last week in February. If by some chance the weather does not cooperate this week, which it doesn't look like it will, our intention is to kind of push our mock AP testing back, and if we have to, we may have to cancel that to take, to give I-Step its priority. So just wanted everyone to be aware of kind of our plans moving forward in, in regards to I-Step.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkendall. Mr. Alt, are you out there?
Hey, I am. I, I'll say the same thing publicly, just thinking about the Teemans every day. Just love having Amanda in our school and, and, and just wishing Jared the best. Think about you guys daily. Quick, quick congratulations to Martha. I didn't know Martha's one of Maddox's favorite teachers, if not favorite over there, so, so, so glad to have Martha on. Big thank you to Gary for everything he's done. He welcomed me here with open arms, and has just been great to work with. So Gary, enjoy your retirement. I hope I see you around once in a while. Thank you to maintenance and transportation for clearing the snow out of the lots. You know, it's amazing when I go over and I see the lots clear that quickly. That's a neat thing. I'm going to try to get in tomorrow and and gives me somewhere to park. Thank you, Mr. Provo and Dennis for making tough decisions on if we should have school or not. Decisions are based on keeping us safe, and, and I really appreciate that. I've had multiple from different counties, people write me privately and say, hey, you guys are doing it the right way. With the, the calls being consistent about the same time in the afternoon or evening, and then in the morning as well. So, so, so thank you, Mr. Provo and Dennis for that. Thank you to my teachers and TAs for rocking out the e-learning. You guys never complain, and, and I appreciate that so much, I really do. That's all I've got. Thanks, guys.
Mrs. Gibbony.
Yeah, I would like to also say that the Teeman family is in my thoughts and prayers. And then just congratulate and thank Gary. I haven't known him very long, but he's, I don't know, the definition of kind. He's always kind and just willing to help, so I appreciate that. So congra, congratulations to Gary. And then I also want to say a big thank you to Amy Terrell. She has worked really hard, and I know that she's built up a great program with Kids Zone, and so I hate to lose her. It'll be hard to replace her, but I do want to thank for, thank her for starting a nice foundation with our Kids Zone program. And then with, you know, with e-learning and our virtual learning this year at the elementary school, one thing that we want to do is give our kids some additional opportunities for in-person learning. So when we get back into the building, we're going to offer some after-school tutoring opportunities for some of our kids. Hopefully, we can do that grades K through four. So we've been talking through some tutoring possibilities after school, and I just, the same, I want to thank all of our teachers for just stepping up, and every time, you know, it's been a year where we've had to pivot here and there, and every time they do a great job. And so I'm grateful to our teachers, but especially our parents and, and our students for the hard work that they've put in to stay connected with our school.
Thank you. Thank you, principals. I'm not going to say too much. I, I do want to thank all teachers, all of our support staff, maintenance, transportation, you name it. This, this has been one doozy of a year. When you go between what we're dealing with, with COVID, and now we've got this crazy weather, it's kept us on our toes. I just really thank everybody that, that I call for help and advice on, you know, I talk to the principals constantly, how are your teachers doing? How are they doing, how are the students doing with, with e-learning? I talk to Dennis daily when he's out checking roads for me and, and roads I wouldn't even know to check. Our, our maintenance crews, keeping our buildings, you know, warm, even though we don't have kids in them, and, and making sure they're, you know, checking our buildings during this crazy weather, so. We're going to come out of this, the other end stronger people. I 100% believe it. I've always been a believer that, that life is 10% what happens to you and 90% how you react to it. So I think we're gonna, we're gonna come out of this stronger people, but I just want to thank everybody that, that is involved with Eastern, Eastern schools. It's been crazy, but we're going to get through it, and, and I think that's, that's it for me.
Okay. Anything from anybody? Any comments? Mike Adams?
No, thank you.
Ron Childress?
Nope, thank you, Mike.
Okay. Heather Hudson? Sharon Epps?
Yes, I do. First, I, I just wanted to congratulate Gina Mitchell and the eighth graders on their TED Talks, that it, it feels like so long ago that they had those public, or that were published and, and but they were wonderful. They just did an incredible job, and I wanted to, one more time, say thank you to Gina for giving those kids those experiences. But also, while we're also thinking about Nancy Hacker's family and the, and the team and family, I'd also like us to remember Faith Ransford and the loss of her husband, Mark. He was a great friend to Eastern Green Schools for many years. He was a great, he was just a wonderful, wonderful person, and I want us to be thinking about Faith during these times.
Scott Carmichael?
No.
Okay, I, I don't have anything. If the, if the board members would hang around after the meeting for just a minute, but we can adjourn the public meeting at eight sixteen. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Scott Carmichael, seconded by Heather Hudson. All those in favor, Scott. Sharon.
Aye.
Heather.
Yep, yep.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
And I vote aye, passed six, zero. Thank you, everybody.